Call to order the Sparks City Council meeting of Monday, August 27th, 2012 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here. Councilwoman Ratty absent. Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan absent. Schmidt.
Here.
City Manager Carey.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you'd all rise for our invocation speech Speaker Rajan Zed, the President of the Universal Society of Hinduism.
I will say in Sanskrit and translate into English. And it is from the ancient scriptures. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvaha Tat Savitur Varenyam Bhargo Devasya Dhimahi Diyo Yona Prashodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme. Who's inside the heart of the heart, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. They stimulate and illuminate our minds. Asthama Sadkamya, Humshama Kyo Thirkamya, Ritya Ummaramratham Kamya. Lead me from the unreal to the real. Lead me from darkness to light. Lead me from death to mortality. Yatam Kurukarma, Guvam Karma, Yaav Yaakarmana, Shriraya Yatra, Pichcha Dena, Sitiye Dikatana, Jagannatha, Karmanaav, Yatra, Lokoyam Karma Taptana, Sudartha Karma Kontya, Mukta Sam Samachara. Fulfill all your duties. Action is better than inaction. Even to mend your body, you are obliged to act. Selfish action imprisons the world. Act selflessly without any thought of personal profit. Dusmadha Sakta Statham Karyam Karma Samachara Asaktu Hachar Karma, Karma Panoti Kurusha, Karma Neva He Sam Siti Vasitara Jankadhyaya, Loka Sangaya Ha Meva Pe Sampa Shyankartum Rahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Bhavatu Sahana Bhavatu Sahaviren Karva Bahai, Chasvi Navadita Mastu Mahavadhisabahai. May we be protected together. May we be nourished together. May we work together with great vigor. May we study the enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Aputi Samna Hethyaniwa, Samnamastu Gomano Yethava Susa Haski. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one that you may long together dwell in unity and conquer. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om.
Thank you. Thank you, Rajan. Appreciate it. If you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Lawson, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is comments from the public. I have no speaking cards. Anyone in the public like to speak under comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for a motion. Yeah, I can do it when we... Okay. Go ahead and make a motion there, Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve the agenda minus 6.3. That to be deferred to the September 10th council meeting.
Okay, second, Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Fast unanimously with those present. Ms. Ratty will be a few minutes late, and Mr. Kerrigan will not be here today, so there's just the three council people. Okay, recommendation to approve minutes. We have none. Number four, announcements, presentations. First, we have presentation by Reno Tahoe Airport CEO on an update COO. On an update on airport affairs, including the recent change in aircraft departure patterns.
Not CEO, sir.
As long as you get the money, that's all it counts.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Adam Mayberry, I'm one of your trustees to the Airport Authority. With me is Dean Schulzstein, he's a COO for the Airport Authority of Reno Tahoe. We have a few items we just want to brief you on, namely the most, the recent modifications to the airspace that have impacted Sparks. Then we're going to transition in, give you a quick recap on some of the remodel projects that the airports undertaking, and a few notes on some new air service. So, having said that, I'll turn it over to Dean. So, sit back, relax, enjoy the flight.
Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Thank you very much for allowing us to come and make a presentation and give you an update on the activities taking place at the airport. I know time is of the essence here, and I will try to move quickly through those three items that Adam had brought up. And, but at any time, if you have any questions or would like clarification, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. Okay, there we go. The first one are the airspace modifications that the FAA have been implementing, and they've been doing this for well over a year now, and they're actually officially in use. But it was originally intended, the purpose of the airspace remodification was to transition from the old ground-based point-to-point type navigation systems that have served the aviation industry very well for many decades to a new satellite-based, much more efficient system. Navigation system which is called NextGen, or Next Generation Aerospace Management System that uses the satellites as opposed to ground-based equipment. The primary purpose of the airspace modifications was to enhance the safety as well as increase the efficiency of the airspace. Prior to implementing those changes, though, the FAA did make, present, propose changes at various public meetings, including the Airport Noise Advisory Panel meetings, the Board of Trustees, Airport Authority Board of Trustees meetings, as well as two public workshops. And then subsequent to those meetings that were held in early 2008, the official implementation of these changes occurred in October of 2011.
Dean, what's the SPTLM, LTM?
The Splitum.
SPTLM?
It's a, it actually does, it's not an acronym.
Oh, it's not?
It's a five-letter identifier.
Okay.
For, and we refer to it as the Splitum. It's a point in space, is all it is, that aircraft use and recognize as a turn point.
Oh, great.
And I'll show you here on a map. If you look... If you look at that point right there, that's called Splitum. Every intersection, every point in airspace has a five-letter, unique five-letter identifier. And this one just happened to be Splitum. So... This is an exhibit from the July FAA presentation, July 2011 presentation, that was showing the comparison of the existing flight tracks that were in place at the time compared to what the NextGen flight tracks were intended to look like. The green are the historical, or at the time, the existing tracks, and the blue were the new NextGen tracks that were proposed over the airspace north of the airport, over the Sparks area. I focused on that because I thought that would be of most importance to you, so... But I do need to point out that two things. One is, we're only in a north flow situation about 20% to 25% of the time. That means departures to the north and arrivals are coming in from the south. 80% or 75% to 80% of the time, we're in a south flow process where arrivals come over Sparks and departures go to the south. So, 20%, on an average yearly basis. The other thing I wanted to point out is that not all aircraft are equipped for NextGen procedures, and therefore, it's going to take time before you see this transition from all green tracks to all blue tracks. It will likely take several years before all aircraft have the equipment in their cockpit to, to actually fly the new NextGen tracks. But most importantly, what I wanted to bring up was the Splitum track, we call it, in the lower right corner of the slide here, this track. And I'm going to zoom in on that, hopefully. This... Sure. The Marina would be right about here. Right under, about the A in the word Sparks is the Marina. This is a new track that was created as part of the airspace modifications, has not been flown on a regular basis prior to that. And the intent was for those aircraft that had the performance capability to climb quickly and make a turn in a relatively short distance after takeoff, it would allow those aircraft to get out of the valley quickly, and if it, and it was intended for those aircraft to stay south of I-80 where there are no residential development. So, this, this track has, has great potential to not only reduce fuel and time for the airlines, but also reduce noise and emissions and improve air quality for the community. Unfortunately, it's not being as successfully used as we would like it to be. And despite all of our best efforts, we are only achieving about a 40% success rate on making, complying with the remain south of I-80 corridor requirement. The other 60% are making the turns, but for various reasons, they're actually flying north of I-80 and making the turns over Sparks, over the Marina, and areas that way. This is a slide that shows the May, June, and July numbers. First of all, I wanted to point out, of the 7,000 plus or minus operations a month that occur at the airport, about 2.5% to 3% of those operations are doing the Splitum procedure. So, in other words, about 200 aircraft a month were trying it, and about a 40% success rate, we'll call it. So, all of the parties have been working very hard to try and enhance or improve that success rate because of the potential benefit that that procedure provides. The Airport Authority has been creating posters and sending emails and various correspondence to the chief pilots, giving them near daily updates on their success rates. The FAA has been verifying that the departure clearance that the aircraft are issued is the Splitum, and it does require a quick turn. And the using outreach out to the cockpit program is for those aircraft that didn't do it successfully, the air traffic control tower would contact those pilots and have a conversation with them, explain where they didn't meet the requirements, and when they come back next time, how they can improve. But unfortunately, it's not being successfully used. So, we are going to continue to work on trying to improve it and come up with solutions, but we're going to, I'll say, shut it down from its operational use until those solutions can be retested in simulators, and then if they prove successful there, then we may reinstitute the procedure again. But for, for now, it's essentially only being issued to those pilots that request it. It's not being offered to anyone else. And those pilots that request it know what it is and have the aircraft capable of using it.
Do we got a question, Dean? Mr. Schmidt?
Dean?
Yes, sir.
And Adam knows this, I've had, not, not a lot, maybe three complaints. First of all, thank you, because you guys get right on it, and you talk to those folks and tell them what's going on. So, if you're going to shut it down, does that mean we're going to have more flights over the top of Sparks instead of making the turn? You're not going to require that anymore?
Well, the, it would, those, the aircraft would go back to the procedures that are already, or the tracks that are already being used.
Were they following those?
Yes. Yeah.
Does it take it over the top of Sparks again?
It will be, it will look more like a combination of the green and blue. The aircraft that are equipped to use the NextGen technology would be using the blue. And this track, there is another component to this track that then turns aircraft to the south and the east direction. But at this point, they are 15,000 to 20,000 feet above ground level, so they're, they're well above the communities at that point when they make that turn to go back south and east.
Is it the turn that makes the noise, or is it the, just the takeoff? Does it turn?
Well, it's, it's the takeoff and the turn and the low altitude. One of the other benefits of NextGen and the airspace modifications is that the changes were made such that we, the FAA has de-conflicted, I'll call it, some of the arrivals and departures to allow the departures to climb unrestricted so that they aren't artificially held at a lower altitude. And then on the arrival side, they've got optimized profile descent approaches now that they essentially reach a point and go to idle thrust and glide to the approach, which are two other improvements of the NextGen procedure. So, that is helping. Even with the green tracks, those, those procedures are helping to reduce the noise levels. But obviously, the best thing to do is get altitude.
Sure.
Get up and out of the, of the area.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dean, thank you for, you know, so far the presentation. I was very supportive of this program when it came on out because I, I see the benefits for Sparks residents on this. I'm kind of disappointed to see we're not going to move forward on it for a while, but has there, what are the pilots saying, the ones that weren't able to do the maneuver? What are they saying the reasons why they, they weren't compliant?
Well, some of them are internal airline procedures. Each airline has their own checklist, and has their own requirements that they have to do certain tasks first. And by the time they get to that on the checklist, they've already reached the 500-foot altitude and gone beyond the point of initiating the turn, so they're starting the turn late. Others are not turning as quickly at a turn rate that would keep them on the track. So, in other words, they're not following a standard three-degree turn. They're kind of, just not following the appropriate turn rate. Other aircraft aren't performing. It depends on the temperature sometimes. If it's a hot day, the density altitude, they don't climb as well as they would in the morning when it's cooler. So, there's, there's a variety of different things. Sometimes the computer on the flight management systems aren't keeping up as quickly to initiate the turn at appropriate times.
I'd be curious to see if there's one company, you know, over another or a certain type of airplane, and, and I've noticed that, you know, the, the experience of the pilots flying into Reno is not the 25-year veterans pilots that are coming on in that do these types of maneuvers. You know, we have a lot of younger generation pilots come on in, so I, I think there's a lot to this story here other than just that, you know, it's only a 40% compliance. It's still real low, only 108, 200 out of, you know, what do you say, 7,000 flights is still minimum, being even requesting it. So, you know, I think there's, I think there's a lot to that story there of how successful you can be in the future depending upon, you know, the person behind the stick that's...
I absolutely agree. I mean, if you look at the green tracks here, you see a lot of aircraft go to the south and the east. And if this can be formalized such that it, it's, you know, the track is followed on a consistent basis, it can remove a lot of the aircraft over other areas of Sparks. But until the process, or the procedures and the checklists and everything can be put in place that it hits it with a higher, much higher rate of success, it is causing noise problems that did not have aircraft flying over those residents previously, so we would be just shifting the noise at that point. So, we're not giving up on it. We are working, in fact, we brought Boeing and Airbus in to have them also get involved. We're working with the airlines. We are going to continue to work on a solution to make it more successful. But until we come up with those steps, we're going to go ahead and not use it as frequently. And then towards your other question regarding certain aircraft and certain airlines, we, we have been tracking it by aircraft type, by airline. Some are more successful than others, but nobody's hitting it 100% of the time. So...
Mr. Lawson?
Just a quick question. You said that certain aircraft can't perform this maneuver. On a percentage basis of departures, what is that number?
That's a very good question.
And a follow-up is, how long will it take to phase that in?
That's a very good question. I don't have those specific percentages, but I'll give you an example. The American Airlines MD-80 doesn't have the climb performance, but that is an older generation aircraft. The newer aircraft, 737, 700s, 900s, they're doing it very well. The Alaska Airlines Q400 is doing very well with it. So, and it, but it varies. I mean, even some of the 737s, the 300s, the earlier generation 300s aren't doing very well at it.
So, it's really a function of the age of the aircraft?
It's primarily aircraft performance, yeah, and the age of the aircraft.
So, it could be decades before you can get 100% compliant anyways?
Yes. I mean, and that is also the timelines that we are looking at for 100% performance with the equipment in the aircraft as well. So, it, it is something that we are going to continue to work with and will evolve, and I hope improve, so...
Thank you.
So, and I, and I'll go ahead and skip over this slide now that we've talked about it, but again, there, there are a lot of operational benefits associated with the NextGen, and we talked about this at the last one, which also bring a number of environmental benefits. So, having these airspace modifications in general, putting Splitum aside for now, is beneficial to the community in general. And I would like to also point out that Mr. Mayberry, Adam, is on our Airport Noise Advisory Panel, and he has been instrumental in making sure that we work with the airlines, making sure the FAA and the airlines either prove this out to be successful or, or not use it, because...
So, we can hold him personally responsible then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely. So, but he has, he has cracked the whip on me more than once. So, so if there are no other questions, I'll move on to the other topic, and I'll try to move quickly through this because we've talked about this before. Just as a quick reminder, the Gateway Project, it was a three-phase project. I'm pleased to inform you that two of the three phases have been completed, and I hope you've been out to the airport recently and saw the newly remodeled baggage claim area and the, the new finishes and look that that has brought to the airport. The IT reconfiguration is also done. That's kind of a behind-the-scenes project, and we are currently about halfway through Phase Three, and we are on schedule and on budget for completion in April 2013. Just for those that haven't been out, you can see the picture in the far left was what it looked like before. A lot of chrome and neon and glitz, which is not really reflective of northern Nevada. The lower-left picture is the, the artistic rendering of what it was going to look like when we modified it. And then the picture on the right side is the finished product. We've got the Truckee River in the floor. We've got the hunt-and-cutthroat trout swimming through the river. We've cut down the, removed the chrome and went with more natural earth-ton colors, stone and wood, which we think are more reflective. And also continued the theme that was started in the bag claim area. We've also opened the Mountain House Diner in April of 2013 before we closed the food court. The Mountain House Diner will serve as the primary food and beverage offering pre-security once all of the work and projects are done. However, the Pete's Coffee will also have an upgraded menu and offering, food offerings as well, so... And again, this is what it looked like before, the rendering and the after. Where we're at currently is, what you're looking at is a big hole in the terminal, and that is where the old food court and the Connector concourse used to be. The existing buildings and facilities have been demoed. We're now doing the earthwork, the foundation work, and we'll start coming out of the ground with the structure of the building in the next month, and then hopefully have the frame in facilities by November, early December this year. So, and then the picture on the lower right is the central core area, and we've finished the tiling and the aesthetics in that area, and we actually brought the slot machines back into, into the core area there. So, everything in the building has been completed. When we're all sudden done, the ground floor of that area that I just showed you, the hole, will be the centralized screening area. And just to orient you, these escalators here are the existing escalators that you see today and you see and use today. Then we will be adding 30 feet to the back of the building, and we'll be consolidating the checkpoint in this one location. And then once you've processed through security, we'll have a much newer and expanded food and beverage offering upstairs, as well as an expanded retail facilities upstairs as well. And if you look at the image here, this will be an 18-foot-high clear ceiling to give a much more larger spacious view, also give a much more dramatic view from the food court area. And then directly across from the food court will be this retail, expanded retail facilities. That's an update on the Gateway Project, and I'll quickly go through air service if there are no questions. Seeing none? Just a couple of announcements. Unfortunately, in April of this year, Southwest Airlines discontinued their service to San Jose, direct from Reno, but airport staff jumped on that quickly and had conversations with several airlines, and we were successful in attracting Alaska Airlines to replace that direct service to San Jose. And, and that brings with it a number of benefits. It connects very well into the West Coast, North and South hub of the Alaska Airlines. You can see Seattle, Portland, LA, and points in Mexico. But it also gets you to Hawaii by 10:00 AM in the morning if you've really got to get away. So, and they offer several flights to Hawaii from San Jose, so, and they're timed, our flights are timed very well to make those connections, so... And then secondly, Southwest Airlines has announced service to Ontario, which is service we have not had before. Unfortunately, it is only from January 6th to March 8th at this point, but that is frequently how airlines test markets to see if they will be successful. And if they are successful, then they will bring that back on a longer-term basis. So, we're hopeful that this will prove to be successful. We will be helping them market that and make it successful, so they will bring it back on a more permanent basis. And then airport staff are working, as you know, or many of you probably know, many years ago, the airport did have correct, connect, direct flights to Canada. The numbers for passengers going to and coming from Canada are still very strong. However, they're connecting through other airports in the US before coming to Reno. We are working on a strategy with our local community partners, as well as the state, as well as Canadian organizations to bring back that direct service. The numbers are there to support it, where our focus is on Vancouver primarily in a daily service, but also seasonal service from Toronto. A lot of folks do come to Reno for skiing from the Toronto area, so we're working with airlines and other groups in that area to try and attract that. Now, I do need to caution, air service development of this nature does take many years, and so it will not be something you will see tomorrow, but it is something I think we, we value, and I think is important for the community, so we're working on that. And then lastly, air cargo initiatives into and out of China. I think we've talked and presented before to you on this. We're, we're working with a global freight forwarder named PacTrans. Their US headquarters are in Chicago, but they are working very closely with us, and we believe later this year, if not early next year, there will be direct flights, not daily, but perhaps once or twice a week, cargo flights between Reno and China, Shanghai, most likely being the first location. And so with that, that's, that's our report.
Thanks, Dean. Questions? Mr. Schmidt?
Dean, I noticed on the 330-day calendar that Reno, Minneapolis has not been replaced yet.
No, it has not. And I'm not sure that it, it's going to be, unfortunately. With Delta Airlines and their hubs... Airlines and their hubs, they are focusing more on Salt Lake as their first point of contact to a hub.
And Delta has no, no future of trying to have a second hub out of Reno at all? Someplace Atlanta, Los Angeles?
Well, we are, we are constantly pursuing Minneapolis. I mean, we, we meet with the airlines in excess of 75 to 100 times a year through various points of contact, either going to visit them, having them come out and visit us, conferences. There are specific conferences set up for air service development opportunities like this. So we meet with airlines, I will say, 75 to 100 times a year, and we're constantly talking to them about Minneapolis and as well as Dulles, and Washington is another flight that we would love to get. But it's based on the numbers and the revenue they can generate.
I also noticed that it appears Continental's going to go away again too.
To Houston?
To Houston, yeah. Is that going away permanently, or is that?
Well, it certainly, our hope that it doesn't go away permanently, but we do know it is going away temporarily. But again, we're working with them to get it brought back, at least on a seasonal basis. It's difficult for the airlines. We have seasonality, and we also have, I'll call it seasonality of the week. I mean, Thursday through Sunday, the aircraft are much fuller than they are Tuesday, Wednesday timeframe, so it's...
You know, and the reason why I point those two on out is those are flights that I use or have used, and on Friday, we're coming back from, from Houston. There were several comments from, that, you know, they don't, they never know when that flight's going to come and go. I mean, it's just, it just seems like it's here for six weeks and then it gone for 12, and, you know, the people that are flying, it goes, I don't know when to book this thing anymore. And, you know, I said, well, I don't think you have to worry about booking it anymore because it's going away. And I see it for two weeks in December, and it looks like it comes back December 20th and it leaves January 5th or something like that. But I don't see it on a calendar beyond that for 330 days. So, one of the things in the presentation we usually get, and I understand why we're not going to get it right now, is the passenger counts, percentage seats and things like that in the presentation. And I know we've taken a pretty nasty hit this last few months in passenger accounts. This is kind of going to policies of the airport. I notice your policy that, you know, the community has to support flight things. You invest all your money into capital improvements. Well, an 18% drop in passenger counts has forced a lot of the airlines to take their widebodies out now and going to, you know, regional jets. I mean, we've probably, other than Southwest Airlines, probably 70% regionals out here now instead of widebodies. And I don't, I'm just guessing from the number of flights that I take, that it's on RJ's going out of here. I mean...
Well, Southwest represents 54% of our traffic, which are 737s, so...
They don't have any RJ's, so they don't have any choice, you know?
Right, exactly.
But, you know, all the other airlines are moving to RJ's. And it's, you know, I'm hearing those comments that, you know, if I have a choice between Sacramento Airport or the Reno Airport, and I'm getting RJ's out of Reno, I'm going to take the trip to Sacramento out of Sacramento, so they don't have to fly those, those aircrafts. But, you know, with that said, I mean, we're trying to increase the business marketing thing. Really, you know, I've spoken to Adam about this, you know, for the airport authority to go back and take a look and say, you know, are all these construction projects increasing our passenger counts? And I would say that they're not increasing the passenger counts. They're providing a nice, open space for people to come and go, but really aren't functionality, you know, aren't something that's pleasing to the experience, that if you've got, you know, it takes all day long to get into Reno, then they're frustrated before they get here. And I don't care how nice of a building you have, once they get frustrated, they don't, and I'll pass on a comment about two months ago, landing at midnight, and it's back when the escalators, there was no down escalators coming off the C concourse. And it was midnight, and then a lady come, you know, approaching the down escalators over their bags, you know, no escalator, and she said, this started profoundly saying, this airport is always under construction. Every time I come here, there's some kind of remodel going on. I'm getting rerouted, going outside to get my baggage coming, you know. So it was, it's frustrating to see, you know, your product is nice. I think it's going to be one of the nicest airports in the country when we're finished with it, and I don't know how many years it's going to take to finish it. But at some point, we've got to stop and analyze this. Are we, are we doing what the business community needs done, and that's promoting our business travel and things like that? And I think that's just something for the board to sit down and look at, say, you know, okay, it's, it's nice to do all this capital improvement, but, you know, it's really the people who are, you know, butts in the seats in those, those planes that are paying our bills. And we've got to make sure we get our, because if these airlines start canceling many more flights or reducing their size of aircraft, we're perpetually going to be going down in passenger counts, and, you know, it's, it's...
Well, I appreciate the comments and the concerns, and I don't know if the council has time to hear some of the explanations or comments in regard to that. And I'll try to be quick. The, the capital improvement program funding sources are restricted in their use for capital improvements. We cannot use the airport improvement program grants or the passenger facility charges for operations or airline incentives. We do have incentives that we do provide for the airlines to bring new markets, bring service to new markets. So we do have an incentive program to try and attract business. And thirdly, I'll just say real quickly, this will be the last project that you see in the terminal building, because when this project is done, we'll have taken all components of the building, which include a 1950's central core area, and refurbished and all of the primary processing building when this project is done. And, and we've done that with $100 million compared to $1 billion for a new terminal. So we've, I think we've been very fiscally responsible in taking the existing building, extending its useful life for 30-plus years now going forward in a very responsible way. And I understand there are customer service issues, and we will certainly take that under advisement.
The airlines have to approve each project, too.
Yes. And to, Adam brings up that the airlines approve the projects for the capital project, so they're, they're involved in it. So...
Like I said, the projects are, you know, nice projects, you know?
But we are working with the regional marketing group, as well as a lot of the properties, in order to try and provide incentives and attractions towards getting more airline service here as well. So your comments are noted and appreciated.
I just get a very unique position that I get to talk to the person next to me on an airplane a couple of times a week, coming in and out of the city, and I, you know, I know what I'm hearing, and I, you know, and, you know, so I pass those messages all along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dean, thanks.
Thank you very much for your time. I will look forward to seeing you again next time.
Consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item 5.12.
5.12. Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Move to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.11 and 5.13.
You have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Move by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.11 and 5.13. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. 512, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Who's, who's staff is going to handle this? Welcome, ladies.
Good afternoon. Mindy Falk, Senior Human Resource Analyst for the Record. Sorry, I'm having allergy-related throat issues.
Jill Valdez, Human Resource Analyst.
I guess what I'm looking for is to go on record exactly what we're going to do here in this. We have a whole bunch of things thrown into one. There's new hires going on, some re, I see salaries going up by 25% for some individuals in this, in this thing. So why don't we go through step by step, explain to the public what we're doing here?
Okay. So the very first one is the Treatment Plant Manager position. Recently, we've had a person leave the position, and we went open and looked at it. We went to the open market to other tertiary plants to see what they're paying. And what we found is we were significantly underpaying that position, and we're fearing that we will not be able to fill it unless we raise it. Do you have any questions on that one?
It's my understanding you're going to come in front of us in a month for an increase in sewer fees, a couple of months, is that correct, to pay for cer, for the treatment plant?
You know, I am, maybe Mr. Carey can help me on that one. I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the sewer fees.
You don't do the sewer fees?
Yeah.
We are coming to the end of our rate structures that were established by the council, and we'll be coming forward in the month of September with a request to do a study of what will be the costs to operate our sewer system into the future. And that will include alternatives, and obviously, we'll, we'll look very closely at rates, and you'll be asked, as that study goes forward, to consider what financial decisions you wish to make. We make the decision here with knowledge that one of the things that's very critical is a leader and an experienced leader at the plant. One of the issues we dealt with in the recent times is a loss of the prior leader in this position. Mr. Burketa has also left us now, so we've actually had two, two losses. And it is a very large budget. We operate this, as you know, jointly on behalf of the City of Reno, and we're in charge of the operation. So it's a, in my opinion, the, the work and the outreach we've done will give us stability and will properly reach the kind of talent we need to manage a budget, which is our primary concern, is maintaining our costs.
The only time, when I see a budget increase on a salary position by 25%, that raises red flags. And I know we're saying we're trying to do this to hire the best people, but I, I question this because we do these studies all the time, so I just question whether we have to... Go ahead, Mindy. Sorry.
No, that's okay. So the next positions, there's actually two maintenance positions that we're asking for. We did have a contract that used to, outside contracted, would do street sweeping. We did put that out for bid, and we had no response. So we do need to bring this back internal, so we need two positions to cover those duties.
I just, I've asked for some backup document. I got those, those documents just morning on this whole process.
Okay.
On the bids that went on out and nobody bids, do we have any written correspondence by any of the contractors that bid the first time around, or why they're not bidding on the second or third time? We had one on the second time because of water issues, but the third time we went on out...
Again, I don't think this is a function of human resources. We have somebody else here to answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For the Record, Neil Cruz, Deputy City Manager for Community Services. We do not have written correspondence related to why nobody bid the third time. As I related in my, relayed in my emails, that the second time we bid, there were questions over the alternative fuels requirements and some verbal indications as to why additional companies didn't bid that second time. But we do not have anything in writing for this, for this third bid.
Thank you.
The next position is for our Police Department. We recently had another employee leave and go to another department, and it gave us the opportunity to look at our department and what was going in in our RT. And what we discovered is that the position needed to be broken down into two different positions. We needed someone to do the day-to-day maintenance of the computers and the radio systems, and then we needed somebody to do some more analytical work that did more systems work. So that's what came to this. We also, this identified a weakness in our complement. We realized that we have one person in police who keep a very important function going, and without any support, that person left, and it left us a hole. So we wanted to, we wanted to rectify that situation, so we no longer were put in such a vulnerable position.
That's the Police Department one?
That's the Police Department one to add on. And then also through that process, we realized, you know, we really aren't, we're not calling our position the right thing, and we do have to come to council to change the name of a title in any resolution. So that's that second piece in the police, talking about changing the name of the title to a, from a system administrator or developer to an analyst, because that's a more appropriate name for that title.
And that's moving the pay grade also, correct?
That is not moving a pay grade at all.
It's not moving the pay rate?
Yeah, exactly. It's just changing the title to something that we think more people outside of our organization would understand what it would mean, and then they would apply for our position. And then through the budget cuts, the Police Department has asked for another property evidence technician. They have discovered that they have quite a lot of workload and would like one more position to be added to their complement.
That Police Chief asked for years ago, so it's not, that's not a new item, so it's...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thanks, Mindy. Good job. Okay, any other questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the reclassification of salary for the Treatment Plant Manager position, the job title change from system developer 1, 2, and senior to system analyst 1, 2, and senior, and authorize the position of 1 Systems Analysis Senior, 1 Property Evidence Technician, 1/2, and 2 Maintenance Worker 2 positions as recommended.
You have a second? Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Move by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson, to approve Agenda Item 512, as outlined by Stephanie. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes 3 to 1. Mr. Schmidt is a no. Thank you. Let's move on to General Business Review and Possible Approval of the Children's Cabinet, Inc., Memorandum of Agreement, in the amount of $29,700 effective July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013. Welcome.
Is it on?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and Councilmembers. I'm Shawna Nelson, Recreation Supervisor. For you today is a recommendation to accept the $29,700 from the Children's Cabinet. This is funding that we use to support families who demonstrate a need for the before and after-school program. Any questions?
Questions? Should be pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
No questions? Looking for a motion? Mr., Ms. Ratty, excuse me.
Move to approve that the council approve the 2012-2013 Memorandum of Agreement with Children's Cabinet.
You have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve Agenda Item 6.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Thanks, Shawna. Next is 6.2, Consideration and Possible Acceptance of the Recreational Trails Program Project Agreement Number 2012-14 between the City of Sparks and the State of Nevada Division of State Parks. Mr. Darby?
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Rick Darby, Parks Recreation Development Operations Manager. Change.
You had to think about that?
Big, long one, yeah. I am before you today, asking you to accept, consider acceptance of this grant. We applied a few months back, went down, made a presentation, and we were selected. It's going to, let's embolze, it's basically going to add a restroom to the disc-drive trailhead that we just, well, right now, we're in construction for Whittaker Regional Trails, or Whittaker Regional Park. There's two trailheads, one at 4th Street, one at Disc. This is going to add a permanent restroom to the disc-drive trailhead. The portion of the max that we'll have to come up with will actually be equipment and man-hours on city staff. Will accommodate our portion of the grant, our match.
Questions for Rick? Questions? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
Move to accept this Recreational Trails Program Project Agreement between the City of Sparks and State of Nevada Division of State Parks.
You have a second? Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Move by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Thanks, Rick. 6.3 is Continued to the September 10th Meeting. 6.4, Discussion and Possible Approval of a Selection or No Selection of a Bill Draft Request for the 77th Session of the Nevada Legislature. Mr. Mayberry?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember...
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Adam Mayberry, Community Relations Manager. For the record, the item before you is an item to, that was continued at the August 13th city council meeting and this is, provides an opportunity to discuss and select a bill draft request. The city of Sparks has an opportunity to submit one bill draft request. The city legislative affairs team consisting of Mayor Martini, Councilwoman Ratty and Manager Carey and myself still recommend that we move forward with, with no BDR at this time and just be mindful that as we enter the legislative session, should things, you know, come to fruition, we can always partner, work closely with a lawmaker with, you know, with various respective legislation.
So we still have an opportunity down the road if we need to do something?
It wouldn't be, the short answer is yes, but it wouldn't be a Sparks sponsored BDR that we would move forward to.
Okay. Questions for Adam? Okay, you really, we don't need a motion on this, do we? Miss, excuse me, Ms. Ratty?
There's a motion in the staff report, so that's where I was headed.
Okay.
So I move to not submit a BDR for the 77th session of the Nevada Legislature.
Do you have a second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to not have a BDR. Any further discussion? Mr. Smith?
Does this mean we get two in two years?
Beg pardon? I missed, I'm sorry.
No. Just say no.
Just say no.
Just say no.
Does it mean we get two in two years?
Oh, okay.
We want to roll over BDR. We'll work on that.
I think it's a good thing.
Maybe ask a BDR.
That could be our BDR. Mr. Carey?
I'm okay, sorry. I need to speak after the item and before the next one.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Mr. Carey?
Yes, I, I noticed that we, we have several members of the public here that may have come to the meeting today to hear a report on the senior center regarding a, a financial arrangement between Washoe County and the city of Sparks. That was not on the agenda today as the staff work was not completed before this time. And I just thought maybe I could save some time for folks who may be in the audience for that by letting them know it will be on the September 10th agenda.
Okay, let's move on to six point five. Consideration and possible adoption of resolution number thirty-two nineteen authorizing the transfer of the city of Sparks 2012 state volume bond capacity of four million eight twenty-five oh twenty-six point six four to the Nevada Department of Business and Industry. Mr. Ornelas?
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and members of the city council. My name is Armando Ornelas, I'm your city planner. As Mayor Martini has said, this item proposes a transfer of the city's 2012 allocation of state volume bond capacity to the Nevada Housing Division, or more specifically to the Department of Business and Industry for the use of the Nevada Housing Division or the First Time Homebuyers Program. The Nevada Housing Division uses this bond capacity to issue tax exempt bonds, which are used to offer low and moderate income households, fixed interest rate, 30-year loans, and usually through the program they provide down payment assistance and closing cost assistance as well. In the two years previous, the housing division has provided approximately $11 million in mortgages to 87 Sparks households. I mean, they do this across the state, but in Sparks specifically, that's what they've done. And this is the only request that was received by the city for its bond cap as an earlier request from the Nevada Rural Housing Authority was withdrawn. And so staff is recommending that the city council authorize the transfer of the cap by adopting resolution three-two-one-nine.
Questions for Armando? Mr. Smith?
We do, is this done every year?
Every year, every year we receive an allocation from, from the state. Basically, the federal government distributes the authority to the states, they intern distribute it to the cities and counties on a per-rata basis. And we've done this, for this purpose for the last several years since other, other interests has dried up. And for the least, the last couple, three years, we split it between the Nevada Rural Housing Authority and the Nevada Housing Division. And in this case, in this year, the only request we have is from the, from the Nevada Housing Division.
Okay. Ms. Ratty?
I was prepared to add a motion.
Unfortunately, we have public comment.
Oh, sorry.
Well, not unfortunately. We have public comment, I'm sorry. That came out wrong. Public comment, Ms., Ms. Brandhorst. Again, Ms. Brandhorst, make sure that you stay on subject. This is about the bond capacity, state volume bond capacity and the Nevada Department of Business and Industry.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to briefly tell you, the people that are, they are trying to qualify for buying a house have never been hired to work. These people never worked here at all. They don't qualify at all because they're illegals coming across the border. They never had, no, what is it, English? And they don't understand what's really going on, but they qualify for a house.
Kathy, you're talking about the, the bond capacity of?
Yes, that's the bond capacity. Thank you. And I just wanted to give you an example of what happened near the Idyllwild Park. This man said he's going to go out there and he's going to look for a house to move into. Oh, boy, did he. He took his little machine gun out there and he said, "I'm going to get this house right here," and he shot down the whole family to move into the house.
Kathy, stand simply, please.
And also, we're having troubles with the DMV motor, where everybody gets their license and their cars are renewed or their license renewed. Well, we've been finding a lot of stolen vehicles.
Kathy, this is not about the DMV, it's about the Nevada Department of Business and Industry.
Well, the homebuyers and?
And it's First Time Homebuyers Project.
Okay. All right, then I'll just exclude the DMV for now. But I just wanted to briefly tell you, you know, what's really been going on and this is the problem right now. And we are having the difficulty with Sioux Falls, South Dakota, coming into our area and they are the worst people we've ever had. We've, I've never had so many complaints in my entire life until they moved out of the Sioux Falls, South Dakota area. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy.
So I want to call the council office and quick break to Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Okay, let's move on to eight point one, which is a first reading.
We got a, we got a motion.
Oh. Lost my, completely lost my train of thought. Ms. Ratty, you want to make a motion?
Sure.
I move for?
Don't include South Dakota in that, please.
Well, my mother-in-law is from South, Sioux Falls even, South Dakota. She's a lovely woman, Eunice Kavanaugh. Move for the adoption of resolution three-two-one-nine to authorize the transfer of the city's 2012 tax exempt bond volume capacity to the Nevada Department of Business and Industry to be allocated to the Nevada Housing Division for the purpose of supplementing their First Time Homebuyer Program in the Sparks community.
Do you have a second, Mr. Smith?
Does that mean your husband's from there too?
Peer.
Peer.
Don't trust him.
He's a peer.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item six point five. Any further discussion?
Husband's from Pierce, she qualified to vote here.
Seeing nothing, none, please vote.
No, it's from Pierce. He had a home over here.
It's a good place to be from. Pass unanimously. All right, let's move on to first reading, eight point one is the first reading of bill number twenty-six forty-six, PCN one-two-zero-zero-nine. Ms.?
To change the zoning from PO professional office to C two general commercial on a site 3.37 acres in size, generally located east of Vista Boulevard, south of Basco Way and north of Eratso Hall Drive, Sparks, Nevada.
This is the first reading for bill number twenty-six forty-six. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, September 10th, 2012. Eight point two, consideration of possible direction to initiate a code amendment to the review, review the period of time a recreational vehicle is permitted to occupy any recreational vehicle park within the city of Sparks. Mr. Ornelas?
Mayor Martini, members of the city council, Armando Ornelas, city, city planner. This agenda item would direct staff to initiate the preparation of a code amendment that would potentially extend the length of stay that's allowed in a recreational vehicle park. The current limitation is 25 consecutive days and not more than 50 days within a three month period. At, at this point, potentially we're looking at a, at an, extending that to 90 days, but we would research that further and bring, bring back the code amendment for future city council consideration.
Questions? Okay, this is a public hearing item, so open the public. Anyone want to speak? Ms. Brandhorst? Eight point two?
Yeah.
No problem.
These people from Sioux Falls just need a motor.
Yes. Now, again, this is about the amendment and review period for recreational vehicles permitted in the city of Sparks.
Again, my name is Kathy Brandhorst, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to briefly tell you, you know, the recreation vehicles, they have no place to park most of the time, so they pull off the side of the street and they do park overnight. But who comes along? It's a police officer. He gives them a ticket and says, "You must move your vehicle off the street." Most of the time, people cannot find a park because they're full and there's no place to park them at all. And there's a lot of complaints, there's no water where they can connect to a water, where they can take a shower. Also, the gas and electric poles are still out there and these vehicles have no way to turn on lights inside their vehicles, so what they're going to do, they're going to connect themselves to these wires and poles in order to get some light inside their vehicle while they stay there for one night. Who's going to be responsible for this? They, they won't because they're not the ones that are actually went down to the gas and electric company saying, "Well, I'd like to have this connected to my home because I'm going to be here for a week." No, they're not going to do that. They're just going to tie themselves to the wire from the pole because it's already there. The electric and gas is already coming down and they already got it connected to their vehicle and that's what they're going to have. They're not going to be charged. Who's going to be charged? The person who lives there is going to be charged. If it's connected to a house, that's who's going to be charged to that house. They're the ones that are going to be responsible to pay for what they took from them because that house already has the wires connected to them. And I just wanted to let you know, this is going on all over the cities, including Reno and Sparks. And it's still continuing today and with no, you know, people are really, really poor. They cannot afford to pay for gas and electric, so they put up more poles, more wires and more shoe boxes so that they can get their gas and electric for nothing. And who's going to be responsible? The person who does pay their own electric and their own gas, the, and their telephone service and their cable service. These are the people that are going to suffer for more, a lot more price.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public hearing, bring her back to council for action. Questions or looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item eight point two as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Pass unanimously. Okay, comments from the city council and city manager? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start opening some conversations on some joint services items with Washington County and Reno. And one of the items I'd like to start bringing up with the council to see if we get on the consolidated meeting agenda is street sweeping, since we've got vast experiences on do's and don'ts this last year in street sweeping and the savings were substantial to the city. I'd like to see us bring in Reno and Washington County to see if we can go ahead and save everybody some money on this and put out a contract that covers community wide.
Anyone else, Mr. Lawson?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Norm Deanda from Q and D Construction and Lucas Oil for a great event they put on at the new Wild West Motorsports Complex, just out by McCarran, Nevada. It was a great project, got a lot of compliments from the folks that showed up there. And my understanding is about 15,000 people showed up for the event this weekend. Norm done a great job in promoting tourism and visitations to the area, so I wanted to thank him again for doing that and that was a great expense out of his own pocket to do that, so thanks again, Norm.
Thanks, Ed. It was a great event. I was out there too on Saturday and it was well-attended. People just loved that stuff. The, the off-road kind of racing is, is really something else. And the time that it took them, about less than 90 days to make that, that course and the amount of dirt that they had to move was unbelievable, so I, I agree, Mr. Deanda did a great job there. Anyone else, comments from the city council or city manager? Okay, comments from the public, Ms. Brandhorst. You're on your own this time, you can talk about anything you want. Freestyle, yeah.
My name is Kathy Brandhorst, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to let you know, I was coming down into Sparks out of Reno and I was coming on the bus. And unfortunately, I was in shock on Prater Way. These houses are all boarded up, businesses boarded up, and what did I find? Shotgun holes, bullet holes, bomb holes, arrows, arrow holes. What are we going here? What are we trying to prove here? Who are we shooting down here? The US-born? Because we really don't have a mayor? Is that the real reason? I'll tell you, that was horrible, terrifying to see when I came into Sparks. The police department's complaining. Also, you know, these police officers say they have no protection. They are afraid, they are scared to be here in Sparks. They have gun, bullet holes across their faces. They got bullet holes because they have to take off their clothes, their uniforms and they're, they are naked. And what are they filled up with? Bullet holes. Or maybe somebody will fill, throw gasoline on their body and set them with a match. They're on fire. You're going to burn them into a black crisp, aren't you? Because they know something here in Sparks. They know exactly what's going on. These US-born are running out of here. We are filling up in Reno. We don't have no place for them either, but we are making a place for them to stay. They're not safe in Reno either because you, there's not a borderline. We can't block the border from Sparks to Reno. We can't block the border from Reno to Sparks. I just wanted to let you know, I, I almost was in tears because I came by this house where Gene and Scott were living. Bullet holes, blood and flesh all over the house. The blood and flesh was all over the floors, the walls outside the, the house. The walls were full of blood rushing right out of the house and it was still nice and fresh when I came by it. There was nobody there to s- There was nobody there to say, "Well, there's an investigation going on here on this house to find out why this is taking place, who is doing this, who is actually making this city very unworthy."
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for August the twenty-seventh, 2012 with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency Secretary Patterson here. Agency members Ratty? Here. Lawson? Here. Martini? Here. Kerrigan absent. Schmidt? Here. Chief Administrative Officer Carey? Here. Agency Attorney Adams? We have court.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up to public comment. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the agency. Number three, recommendation to approve the minutes of the July twenty-third, 2012 meeting.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair. Second?
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Four, four point?
Four.
A report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period July fifth, 2012 through August eighth, 2012.
Move to approve?
Go ahead. Second?
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Comments? Is that public? Number five?
Agency Chief first.
Okay. Five point one, comments from the agency, Chief Administrative Officer. Okay, I'll open up to the public. Anybody wishing to speak at this time? Okay, Kathy, you get three minutes. Freestyle.
My name is Kathy Branthorst, Lisa Marie Presley, John Benay Ramsey, John Steele, and I'm also the United States President. I just wanted to briefly tell you, the Dollar Store on Plum Street had another robbery. And what happened was, these men decided they wanted three hundred and eleven dollars worth of dollar stuff. So they stashed it all in plastic bags, three hundred and eleven dollars worth. When it was time to pay, they did not have no money to pay for the three hundred and eleven dollars. They were arrested. They went to jail. And I was there at the store. And when the officers came to arrest them, they went straight to jail, and they're supposed to be in jail until court. Well, there was no court, there's no jail either. They're out of jail. They're still walking the streets. And what happened? They went back to the Dollar Store with their machine guns and their shotguns and killed all the employers, all the employees, and the customers that were in the store. And not only that, they got away with four hundred and fifty dollars worth of dollar stuff out of the store. So, you see, we're not really safe, are we? We're not really sure who's responsible to take care of the problem at the jails. Who's supposed to be there to tell them, "You're not leaving this jailhouse, you're not leaving this jail cell, you're going to stay here until we tell you, you're out." Now they escaped. Who's supposed to have that responsibility? Do you know? Well, I just wanted to briefly tell you, this problem is still going on in both cities, and we are getting really, really upset that this is going on twenty-four hours. No matter if it's midnight, they are still releasing them out of the jails and walking the streets all the way downtown. And what, what do they have? Oh, maybe Schimmel might hand them a gun and say, "Here, you can have this. Now go rob the casino." Maybe, you know, the casino might have enough money where you can start all over again because remember, they don't have no money. Where are they going to get their money from? Banks, robbing banks? Yes, it's going to be robbing banks. And those tellers don't have a chance, those customers don't have a chance either. Who's going to be responsible after they're dead and they're gone? Well, they took the whole loot out of the?
Thanks, Kathy. Make sure you fill out that court for us.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency? Okay. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.